Okay, your order. As per everyone, please take a moment and silence yourself might interrupt the meeting. But I just moved I just moved there all year because first thing. Okay, good evening. To this meeting of the mayor and common council Westminster incorporated on eight in eighteen eighteen, regardless of what is behind this. We are gathered here at historic city hall originally in the state built in eighteen forty two by Colonel John K Longwell. The city was acquired this building in eighteen nineteen thirty nine, and it has since been the venue where the mayor and council conduct the city's business. One interesting fact about Westminster is in June of eighteen sixty three, just before the Battle of Gettysburg. We all know about this one. A small group of Union cavalry led by Captain Charles Corbett charged a much larger Confederate force from downtown Westminster. Though outnumbered, their brave they their bravery delayed the Confederates and impacted the timing of an arrival at Gettysburg. This skirmish known as Corbett's charge is a proud moment in Westminster Civil War history. Moving on, the council typically convenes on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and are also streamed live on the YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We send our gratitude to the media center for the partnership and ensuring that the that uh pub the public has access to these meetings. Now we'll begin the meeting as we do every meeting with Pledge of Allegiance uh and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands by nation by ground indivisible with the routine justice for all. Thank you very much. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on s at the city's website. Part copies of the agenda are available here in the front of the room for those in attendance. We have one presentation this evening, and that will be Magic's quarterly uptake uh from Miss Kim Sandelson, executive director. So, Kim, what was yours?
Good evening, everyone. Um, good evening. Um, so this is actually two quarterly reports since January, obviously, um from January to June of twenty twenty five. This is our downtime of the year. Um, for those of you who do not know, Magic works to build a technology centric ecosystem that fosters innovation and talent using our three pillars incubation, education, and innovation. Thanks to the generous support from the city, we work to um do entrepreneurial startup support here, technology, education, and we do community tech connections to bring the the sorry words today um to bring the community together.
That's a rebate for me.
It's been a long month. Um, these are some of the entrepreneurial support things that we do. One Million Cups, which is um highly regarded here in the community. So every Wednesday morning, we bring a lot of people together to talk about what's going on in the community, um how we can support each other and lift each other up in the community. Um Startup Lab, which is entrepreneurial cohort that we um work with. So bringing in new businesses to help them be successful. Our Angel Network, which actually brings investment dollars into our community by helping invest in technology companies. And then just the standard support of incubation. So we um sit down with somebody deciding that they're gonna do business here in Westminster and help them get the support that they need. Um, so our impact, like I said, this is um our low time. This is where we do most of our planning, this timeframe. So our impact is that we've um dealt with or we've talked to and helped um fifteen give or take entrepreneurial connections. Um, we do a lot of work with SBDC here, so we refer a lot of people to them. Um, one um new group of um six cohorts are starting this fall, and then we have two network um events planned for angel investing. Technology education, we do cybersecurity, robotics and AI and business and entrepreneurship. So all of those things together teaches the next generation to go forth into the work world um with skill sets that they can use. Um, our impact there, we've served since January over a hundred students. Um, that includes our successful summer camps that we did this year. Uh, we've engaged thirty plus mentors and volunteers. Um, and I wanted to just highlight this because we work with a lot of elementary and middle school kids. Some of those kids have come into their high high school years and have started to move on to college. So we can actually look at the metrics for that now to see where they're going. Um, so we had four high school interns that were accepted into um a four year college with scholarships, and a lot of that was due to the extracurriculars that they did with Magic. Um, we had one high school intern accepted into a four year with a full ride. And that is specifically because of the letters recommendation that we wrote for these students and and um and the things that we've done to help promote them. Um, hopefully they'll come back into our community when they graduate and start giving back. Um, sponsorship dollars, we've received around fourteen thousand dollars in sponsorship dollars for our day our events. And then grant dollars is around fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, community connections, we try really hard to bring the community together. Uh, we do cyber sit, we do robotics expos, our Good Game of Maine, which is very popular with a lot of the families around here. Um, technology partnerships, uh, we do uh connections with FITC, Parker County Economic Development, our own count uh Carroll County Workforce Development, Carroll Tech and Innovation Council, um economic development, and obviously the city of Westminster. And then we are building synergy with our local educational institutions. We are working on partnerships at McDaniel College. Um, we have a good partnership with Carroll Community College. Um, so just building connections. I just I'm very proud of our robotic students this year. We actually got an artistic excellent award at the Peep Show this year, so I just wanted to show that off a little bit. So they did a good job. Um, by the numbers, so year to date, we're looking um operating budget around three oh nine. A lot of that has to do with grants, sponsorships, donations, and then program revenue. Um, our program revenue, if you looked at it from last quarter, has started to rise significantly, and that in part has to do with the summer camps that we provided this year. Also, as to date, all of our fall classes are completely full with waitlist. Um, that opened up less than ten days ago, so. So measuring success for us, ARC obviously is a big success for us. So our first summer camps are in the book, um fall robotics classes are full. Um, new windows at ARC. You have to have been there before the new windows to realize what a success that is. Thank you for SAW grant. Um, and then we've scheduled our startup lab cohorts at our Westminster Angel Network dinner for late fall. Uh, we will be finishing up our comprehensive economic report, Grow MD, that's an EDA grant that we did. Um, that was a two year process, and we partnered with FITC and Hartford County Economic Development. That report should be available the end of October. Um, it's about sixty pages at this point, but it does um really narrow down into the um specifics for a lot of the rural communities. Um, we were surprised after talking with the three distinct um areas how similar um that numbers don't really aren't really recognized with the economic development that's going on in the area. And then I just wanted to do a shout out to Senator Alsobrook for touring um the time that they spent at ARC. I think that bringing those kind of those people into our facility and into our community helps them understand what it is that we're doing as a so um and that's interview. So we actually have a lot of great kids. They keep coming back, so we must be doing something right. And um I just wanted to give a shout out to Sober Living. So he was actually one of our startup lab cohorts, and he ended up in the Biz Challenge, um which is a Carroll County tradition here, and he walked away with the uh changemaker board, yes, so. Um, and then looking forward, again, we're working on our cybersecurity competitions um for October. The EDA final report will be out, our events. Uh, we are planning another community fundraiser in November, and then we are gonna bring back our holiday dream garden that we did a couple years ago. Everybody's been asking for it, so we're gonna be bringing it back.
With all the ducks?
With all the ducks, yes. Actually, we'll leave over this time around, but we have a full spread. Um, fall class is starting in October. Um, our Makerspace workshops, which I haven't really delved into, Makerspace is getting really popular. We get a lot of overflow from Exploration Commons because they're so full all the time. But what I have noticed is a lot of the entrepreneurs and startups come to us to look for um when they're building prototypes or they're looking for particular ideas on building an actual product. Um, we've been getting a lot more inquiry where that's concerned too, which is actually positive. And then we are working with workforce development to develop a new upscale training program. I don't know if anybody's um familiar with the Alice Project. So this came out from the United Way, it was a big report, and it's a which seventeen percent of the population in the Westminster area actually fall within this range. And um it's those um individuals that don't make enough to be able to upscale or to move into bigger jobs. They're working two jobs to make ends meet. I mean, a car breakdown or their HVAC going up causes devastation because they're in that that little niche. So we're working a lot of train of brain to help move them along as well. And I think that's it, so we have any questions? Uh, Mr. Mr. President?
Uh, not a question, just a comment.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to uh thank uh Miss Sandelson for uh the role that we played when Senator Alsobrooks uh had visited us, I think uh Magic and ARC did a little bit of carrying that day uh for the city and um you know, you you're speaking about the you know, the art facility and the impact that Magic has on the local businesses um really helps set the tone for that's for that base. I just wanna say thank you very much for that. I know we call on you a lot whenever we have elected officials in town. You're always going right to ARC first with them.
And and it's fine because I love bragging. I mean, it's it's something that the city can actually be proud of because it's a great facility and it's unique.
We will continue and do that.
So, and I just be there.
Just wanna say thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Whenever we ask something of you, you are always right there.
Yeah.
And willing to help us out.
Well, and that's the whole idea. I think that when we were at the um um meeting with Senator Alsobrooks, that was brought up, that this is a community that actually lifts each other up, and we're there to to watch it.
And that I think is not lost.
Yes.
On the senator.
Yeah, and I think that that's important because there's a lot of small communities that are very disassociated, so.
You know, we have that here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all.
Any other questions? Magic, also known as Westminster Show Pony. Thank you very much. All right, so uh next up, we have uh two public hearings, and in the city of Westminster, public hearings are conducted by the mayor. So, Madam Mayor, here's your gavel, and the meeting is yours.
Okay, so uh I'm gonna call the first public hearing to order. Um, this is the Westminster Office of Housing Services five year plan and annual plan. Westminster Office of Housing Services five year plan. The five year plan depicts the agency's mission, goals, and strategies for serving the needs of low, very low, and extremely low income families in the city of Westminster over a five year period. The an the annual PHA plan is a comprehensive guide to policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. Uh, Mr. Brown, would you like to give us a staff report?
I'd be honored to. The mayor and common council, your resolution number seventy six dash five declared itself to be a public housing authority or PHA. Within the meaning of federal and state law, the PHA is required to have a governing body that is responsible for oversight, policy formulation, policy, and contract approval. In the case of the Westminster Public Housing Authority, the mayor and common council is that governing body. The Public Housing Authority or PHA plan process was established by section five A of the United States Housing Act of nineteen thirty seven, which was amended by section five eleven of the Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty nineteen ninety eight, creating the requirement for submission of a five year plan and annual plan by all housing public housing agencies administering public housing or housing chores voucher program. Pursuant to twenty four CFR nine oh three point seventeen A, the PHA boards of directors or similar governing body, for example, the mayor and common council, must conduct a public hearing to discuss the plan, either the five year plan and or the annual plan as applicable, and invite and invite public comment on the plans. The hearing must be conducted at a location that is convenient to the residents served by the PHA. The PHA plan is a comprehensive guide to a PHA's policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. There are two parts to the PHA plan. The five-year and the annual plan, which are submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development or HUD every fifth PHA fiscal year and annually respectively. The Housing and Economic Recovery Act provided an exemption for public housing agencies with five hundred units or less from the requirement to prepare and submit an annual plan. The Westminster Public Housing Authority has two hundred and ninety-seven vouchers and is exempt from the requirement to submit an annual plan to HUD every year, however. The Westminster Housing Authority must submit a five-year plan every fifth PHA fiscal year. The Public Housing Agency made a draft five-year plan available for public review and comment. The draft five-year plan is available on the city's website. A public notice announcing the commencement of a public comment period beginning on July eighteen twenty fif- twenty twenty-five and ending on September eighth, twenty twenty-five was placed in the legal section of the Carroll County Times and published on July eighteen, twenty twenty-five. A copy of the draft five-year plan is attached to this memorandum. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council approve the Westminster Public Housing Agency's five-year plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Would anyone like to speak on the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close this hearing at seven eighteen PM. Alright, moving on, I'd like to call the next public hearing to order. Westminster Public Housing Authority proposed changes to the Housing Choice Vouchers Program's administrative plan. The administrative plan for the Housing Choice Voucher Program establishes the policies for carrying out the Housing Choice Program in a manner consistent with HUD requirements, local goals, and objectives. Mr. Brown, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, ma'am. The mayor and common council, your resolution number seven-six dash five, declared itself to be a public housing authority or PHA. Within the meaning of federal and state law, the PHA is required to have a governing body that is responsible for oversight, public, policy formulation, policy and contract approvals. In the case of the Westminster Public Housing Authority, the mayor and common council is that governing body. Pursuant to twenty-four CFR, that is a code of federal regulation, nine eight two point five four A, the PHA must adopt a written administrative plan that establishes local policies for administration of the program in accordance with HUD's requirements. The administrative plan and any revisions of the plan must be formally adopted by the Board of Commissioners or other authorized PHA officials. Twenty-four CFR nine eighty-two point five four B provides that the PHA must revise the administrative plan if needed to comply with HUD's requirements. The Housing Authority of the City of Westminster operates the city's housing choice voucher program. The Housing Authority is making proposed changes to comply with the Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act of twenty sixteen, or HOPMA, which amends several sections of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen thirty-seven. The proposed changes require a minimum of a thirty-day comment period. A public notice announcing the commit- commencement of the comment period beginning July eighteen, twenty twenty-five and ending on September eighth, twenty twenty-five was prepared and posted on the website, advertised in the legal section of the Carroll County Times, and conspicuously displayed in the Housing Department's office. The mayor and coun- common council was scheduled to conduct a public hearing on the draft administrative plan at its regular meeting on September eighth, twenty twenty-five. The staff recommends that the mayor and common council approve the Housing Authority of City of Westminster's proposed changes to its administrative plan as outlined in attachment A, and that those changes become effective upon approval by the mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would anyone like to speak on this issue of the public? Hearing none? What is that, public hearing? Turn that back if you'd like, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, next order of business is to introduce uh, special guests and we could have one special guest to do this evening, probably very special. Uh, one in particular, um, Janelle Omboi, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Good, from McDaniel College, McDaniel has committed to send a representative to our meetings. Um, as long as they're in, in, actually have students on campus, so it's, we're about nine months typically presenting someone, so we're glad to have you here, Janelle. Like to say something, please, the floor is yours.
Yeah, we appreciate getting the opportunity to provide some updates, we wanted to let you know that we just welcomed back, uh, well, we welcomed four hundred, excuse me, five hundred and sixteen new students to McDaniel for the fall. Um, and that they join our returning students, so we're expecting close to seventeen hundred students on, uh, as undergraduate students at McDaniel this year. Uh, we have awarded over fifty-five million dollars in financial aid this year to help support those students, um, which was impacted by some of the reductions in the Maryland State Grant Program. So McDaniel was able to step in and provide support for those students that allowed them to continue, um, their enrollment at McDaniel. Wanted to let you know that we are looking forward to the Fall Fest Parade coming up here that we participate in and uh, we are also pushing quite hard to get that track finished up before the first home football game, we're all, you know, fingers crossed for no rain. Um, just to reiterate, because we have received questions, there are no plans to change access to the track. Um, public will continue to have access to walk the track as they always have in the past. Um, and we hope that, um, everyone enjoys that once we finish that project up. We are also just a few weeks out from completing our renovation at the hospital for the new nursing program. We welcomed thirty new nursing students, um, this fall, so we're seeing significant success with, in the early days of that program and have been working closely with the hospital. Uh, over the next six to nine months, you'll start to see some, um, visual identity of McDaniel when you go over to the hospital campus. So, um, we're excited about their partnership. And I also wanted to remind everyone that each fall and spring, we uh, create a document called McLive, which lists all of the public events at the college that are open to members of our community. There are harder copies all throughout the city, um, but it's also available online. So if you'd like to see a theater production or any of the lectures, we always welcome the community to come to campus and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle, I understand uh, talking to uh, Professor Jaskin, if they hand pour that track, so two guys just hand poured it.
Yes, it's very much like the water tower project where you think it's going to be one way and then people are up there doing it by hand.
She says she was pretty surprised watching him do it. So five sixteen, is that uh, is that pretty standard for you guys, high, low?
Uh, it's pretty standard, um, yeah, I, I think our, uh, it's right around where we want to be typically about five hundred new students is what we're going to be for, so a little bit on the high side, but.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you. Where are we going? Oh, go ahead.
Why is the track shiny? Do you know that? So, it's, I, I would, would drive by and it's so reflective.
Wet, yeah, well, it's, well, it, it looked wet, it's no longer like that, so if you've seen the paint, it's being painted green and gold. Um, so it'll have gold exchange lanes and then a green sort of primary area around the track. So that now looks more like the turf, like the, the style that you would expect. But, yeah, it was all the layering of the different types of, you know.
Wow, okay.
Your party's all shiny and fresh.
It was impressive.
Yeah, it'll be a great facility, we're very excited about it. We believe that it will allow us to host meets and things now at the college, which will bring some additional economic impact to the city.
Like that.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I should also add, the Westminster Walk continues to be one of our new students' favorite traditions. I feel like it gets bigger and better every year, it's so fun to see them participate in that. Um, so thank you for everyone's participation and so many of the businesses that joined and we saw all over their social media accounts and things like that. So, um, the students just really appreciate it and we continue to receive rave reviews. I will add too, um, I monitor the parent, my team monitors the parent Facebook group. It also is always one of the things that parents remark on, that it's such a distinctive, um, thing for a city to welcome students in that way. And I think it really differentiates McDaniel and Westminster among all of the parents, um, of our students. So thank you for your support of that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to approval minutes. We have, uh, to consider the approval of previous meeting minutes, we have one set of minutes to consider. Uh, the mayor and council meeting minutes from August twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five, and have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
I think, um, Ms. Gilbert had the motion and Mr. Dayhoff had the second. So, is there any discussion related to approving the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We have three items on the consent calendar this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dayhoff, you were first up on that one.
Should be on Jeopardy.
You need a button back there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huff. May I, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now we'll move on to make your report from the mayor. Madam Mayor?
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. President, so bear with me, it's a little bit longer, um, than it usually is. But, um, on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, I had the honor of storying to the patrol commander, Captain Jason Jones, who is with the succeeding. I imagine he will be introduced properly a little bit later. Uh, Captain Jones comes to us via the Portland Police Department where he retired after twenty-six years of distinguished service. And he is looking forward to relocating in the area and becoming part of the community. On August twenty-sixth, I also attended the MML's Lunch and Learn on the, uh, proposed twenty twenty-six legislative priorities. Uh, this particular webinar, webinar dove deeper into legislative committee's priority proposal on modernizing municipal revenue streams. On Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, I was incredibly honored to host Senator Angela Alsobrooks in Westminster for about two and a half hours. Uh, we began with a short walking tour of Main Street, uh, visiting ARC. Thank you to Kim Samuelson for showing off ARC and introducing the senator to how MAGIC utilizes the gigabyte fiber in Westminster. After the walking tour, the senator had a roundtable discussion with the Downtown Business Association. Want to say thank you to all the downtown businesses who, uh, came out for the event. Um, the room was, uh, crowded and it was really wonderful to hear how the downtown businesses all support one another and how the strength of the community has become the powerhouse of Westminster. Um, the senator's visit was capped off with a trip to Jeannie Bird's for lunch and some more conversation. And I want to say thank you to Bernie Vogel for being such a wonderful host for, uh, the perfect lunch. Um, Thursday, August twenty-eighth, there was another wonderful concert by Fine Tune Presents at Covalent Distillery on Main Street. Uh, once again, the venue is packed and it's so fulfilling to be able to listen to high-quality live music during the week in Westminster. Downtown Westminster Farmers Market is still going strong, there are eleven Saturdays left uh, in our farmers market, produce is in full swing right now, so be sure to hit the farmers market for your local veggies and other products. I'd like to thank Sarah Delaney of Delaney Glen Farm, who has been our market manager this season. Her connection with the local agricultural community has resulted in some really fun Saturday events where adults and kids alike. Um, there has been a petting zoo frequent a few times, there have been miniature horses, baby goods, activities for kids such as Touch a Police Car Day. Um, and we recently had Grandparents' Day this past Saturday as well. Um, I like the monthly calendars that go up in advance letting everyone know what events are coming throughout the month. This past weekend, I, along with council member Ann Gilbert, attended the Bluegrass Bourbon and Bachi fundraiser for the Historical Society. Ms. Lenny McNulty was there as well, uh, for the Historical Society of Carroll County. The event was held at Union Mills Homestead and the weather could not have been better. The Black Eyed Susies performed, uh, they are Maryland's all-female bluegrass band. And they were wonderful to listen to while sipping cocktails and learning to play bocce. And then finally, last but not certainly least, I would like to take a minute to recognize our city administrator, Ms. Sarah Jean Pauls, who celebrated her
We were open.
Who celebrated her fourth anniversary with the city yesterday on September seventh, twenty twenty-five. During the last four years, the city has invested in the future for its residents and a commitment to the people of Westminster. Ms. Pauls, you are a dedicated and professional individual who has coalesced the city staff into a stronger, forward-looking government. You continue to set a high bar for leadership in the city and the county. Thank you for your outstanding work, we certainly would not be in the position we are in today without your leadership of the staff. And I look forward to the next four years of continued success. That is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and now.
Oh, sorry, no. Just, sorry, one more thing.
No.
Uh, to follow up on Janelle's comment, um, I, uh, received a piece of mail earlier this evening at the council meeting. Uh, just another thank you, uh, from McDaniel for, um, everyone who took time to be at the Westminster Welcome, spent time with students. Um, and the students this year, I would say, um, I think they spent the longest amount of time, maybe in Westminster, uh, than in the past. And everyone I talked to, they were incredibly polite and wonderful and very willing to answer all my questions. So, thank you. Alright, now I'm finished.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now we'll move on to reports from the committees and, uh, right back to you, Madam Mayor, Arts Health.
I do not have a report.
Alright, Economic and Community Development, Mr. Huff. Uh, may I report to you? Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Carrero.
There's nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Personnel, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, nothing on personnel.
Oh, it's safety, I can't, uh, not gonna be able to stay tuned, but, uh, it is brief. Um, Police Department's newest, uh, police officer Dylan, um, Abdel Malik successfully completed his field training on September fourth and is now serving in sole control himself throughout the training period and is already proving to be a strong asset to the department and the community. That is my entire report. Uh, if we move on, last to public works, Mr. Carrero. Thank you very much, sir. Recreations Parks, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, Recreation and Parks wrapped up eleven weeks of summer camp, serving two hundred and forty children throughout the summer and engaging nearly one hundred campers and counselors in training, two by teams each week. During the twenty twenty-five Westminster Living Simple Process Season, which has now completely, completely welcomed four hundred and fifty pool members, successfully launched private swim lessons, and continued to offer pool parties and weekday alcohol fitness classes. To close out the season, staff posted the annual pool party on September thirtieth, including nearly two hundred dogs and three hundred owners, so, but I need to stop right here. Those two hundred dogs, all in one, this is through a very large span of time, because I cannot envision them. Two hundred dogs, I'm just saying, that's a lot of dogs, they're all, they're very loving. It's quite impressive. Um, all of those two hundred dogs and three hundred owners, um, came also to raise funds for reach-out rescue and resources. So not only did those dogs help, but it was also to help reach out, that's me. Lastly, I want to remind you, save the date for upcoming, upcoming four-day Westminster Fall Fest, taking place September twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth in city. And if you need any more details on Fall Fest, you can go to www.westminsterfallfest. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Uh, Ecology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff, really important this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator.
And if there are elemental relations, Mr. Huff, seeing the report, thanks. Yeah, right, you're going to council comments and discussion, Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Mr. President, just, just two things briefly, just for, uh, following, you know, Mr. Huff. Uh, happy birthday, right, man, so good, good day, you know, it doesn't matter. Um, second thing I wanted to do is just mention, I, I know a lot of you with this, good, girl, though he came in, but I know we all drive past St. Paul on a regular basis, and I just want to say, I wanted to, um, the Public Works Department, who does the fabulous job. past City Hall on a regular basis, and I just want to say, I wanted to, um, the Public Works Department, who does a fabulous job. They keep, uh, the box here behind City Hall, they're there. So, you, if I've kind of looked at space and thought, geez, it's kind of gloomy and dark and people forget even I drive when I'm. But, I mean, they've done a wonderful job cleaning up and taking out some things that probably didn't need to be there. It's bright and it's friendly and I just think it was fabulous. So, thanks to all the guys, the members of the department, Ms. Pauls, you, please. Good person on the line, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all. I don't, not to mention our purple life, right?
Well, okay, that's all we're gonna say. You don't know what's on this, but it was, which you probably should have chucked it out today.
Yeah.
You want to do that? How long have you been saying that? It's, uh, I think I'm down for it.
Mr. Dayhoff. Uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, I have one thing, um, being a member, I'm, um, okay, I'm, 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 I'm going to do, um, a little bit of talk for the Vietnam Memorial War. Um, well, it's a good time, but it is moving here in the county from February ninth to the thirteenth. Have the humans decided that the carnival class, um, re-mission opened to public, we're gonna have successful free, our game. The wall will be open twenty-four hours a day, um, from six P M. on Thursday to Monday, the thirteenth at eleven A M. There are events every single day, um, Wednesday, October eighth, um, the live scene from the county. The opening ceremony will be at six P M. on Thursday, October ninth. Um, there will be an Angel, Angel of Orange awareness night on Friday, October tenth. Um, on Saturday, October eleventh, there will be a U V fly-in and landing, um, that pretty big is October twelfth, but at this rate, we're definitely not gonna worry about that. Um, at six P M. in E W N, nine A, Remembrance Night, it will occur on the eleventh. And then closing ceremonies will be, um, Sunday, October twelfth at six P M. And the official closing of the wall will be October thirteenth. Anybody who has any little small information, they can go to www.bablinball.com if you want to check out the specific details of the movement. Events or have any questions. That is all.
Gilbert, Mr. Huff.
Uh, nothing for the answer.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, two quick things. Number one, I wanted to echo the mayor's comments regarding, uh, Ms. Pauls's adversary. Um, there's been a lot accomplished over the four years that you've been here. I've, uh, I've been on Long Island, worked with actually four city administrators, um, one intern and two other full-time. I have to say, you, uh, you've done it a lot in four years, and done that all at the same time. We're planning on the future for a player looking forward and also, um, done it in a fiscally responsible way, which I know you know is very important to me, as it is with everybody sitting up here. So, we're very grateful for that. Just wanted to again commend you for a job very well done. Thank you. I also wanted to welcome Captain Jones. I'm really excited to have you here, uh, both here tonight, but here in the city as, uh, our patrol captain. So, wel- welcome aboard. I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of great things out of you, so. And look forward to getting to know you a little better as well. That's all I have. Uh, we'll move on to bits we have done. Um, let me see, we have four bits of resolution this evening. We have one, um, and that would be twenty-five oh eight, Mr. Whitworth.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Council Mayor. Uh, tonight, we have the introduction of annexation resolution number twenty-five oh eight, annexation number eighty-nine. The Knit Center Park Condominium Phase One, petition for annexation to enlarge the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus one point four seven acres contiguous to and joining the city's existing corporate boundaries. Insisting on real property located at five-three-one Old Westminster Pike, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven. Also identified as tax account numbers, and bear with me on this, zero-seven dash one-five-five-seven-three-five, zero-seven dash four-three-two-one-two-four, zero-seven dash four-three-two-one-two-five, zero-seven dash four-three-two-one-two-nine, zero-seven dash one-five-five-nine-six-four, zero-seven dash four-three-one-eight-three-three, zero seven dash four-three-two-one-two-eight, zero-seven dash one-five-five-seven-four-three, zero-seven dash four-three-two-one-two-seven, and zero-seven dash four-three-two-one-two-six, and map zero-zero-four-six, grid zero-zero-one-five, parcel zero-zero-one-seven.
Could you have a pizza?
Tonight for the introduction of annexation.
Boy, I am so glad Mr. Whitworth refamed the table, hasn't read the ordinancees. Okay, so, Mr. Depot, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Knit Center Park Condominium, Inc., House O'Gums, LLC, Covington Properties, LLC, Inspire Services, LLC, Cantor Landauer Properties, LLC, E L V, LLC, and Militello Health Properties, LLC, collectively the petitioners. Request of the Mayor Common Council annex certain property located at five-thirty-one Old Westminster Pike, containing one point four seven acres and further identified by Mr. Whitworth into the corporate limits of the city. The Mayor Common Council may enlarge the boundary with the city of Westminster as provided in the Annotated Code of Maryland. The property is made up of ten separate condominiums, so it's one building on a parcel, and the building is separated in ten condominiums. Two of the petitioners have filed building permits for new uses, a doctor's office and a new adult daycare facility require an additional water sewer allocation. Pursuant to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan and the City of Westminster and Carroll County Agreement for properties contiguous to the corporate limits, the owner must initiate annexation of the property into the city in order for the property to be served if the property meets the test for annexation. Pursuant to the City of Westminster Water and Sewer Allocation Policy, owners of properties located outside the city limits but inside the water sewer service area that are eligible for annexation under the state laws, who desire to connect to the city's public water system or require additional allocation, must be annexed into the city to be eligible to apply for water allocation. This property is located outside the city limits but inside the water and sewer service areas and is eligible for annexation under state law. The property is currently served by public water and sewer. The annexation area is zone C two Commercial Medium Intensity District under the zoning laws of Carroll County. And the petitioners are requesting that the property be zoned B Business Zone under the City of Westminster zoning ordinance. Development in the B Business Zone is substantially similar to development in the C two Commercial Medium Intensity Zone. With this, staff recommended the Mayor Common Council introduce Resolution twenty-five oh eight for Annexation Number Eighty-nine, allowing the annexation process to begin. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. I have a motion to introduce Annexation Resolution Number twenty-five oh eight. Mr. President, I will make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Huff. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Is there any discussion related to the introduction of Annexation Resolution twenty-five oh eight?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, um, just a, probably a tiny minor question. There's a new adult daycare center moving into that location, potentially.
Potentially.
It is separate and different from the adult daycare center that's going in on one forty, correct?
Yes.
So, so there'll be two of them here.
Yes.
Excellent.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Recall the question. Okay, hearing no more discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor of introduction of Annexation Resolution Number twenty-five oh eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the Annexation Resolution is introduced.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. You have no unfinished business that I'm aware of? Is there any unfinished business? There's no new business that I'm aware of this evening? Is there any new, is there any new business that I'm not aware of? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to departmental reports. Ms. Pauls.
Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you for the kind words about my anniversary yesterday. Uh, I'm very pleased to be here. I'm a big fan of Westminster and I feel very lucky and honored to be able to serve the residents and the staff here. Um, we certainly could not be as successful as we are, though, without our department units. So, I want to take a moment to thank all of you. I am only as successful as all of you are and all the hard work that you put in as well. So, we will start tonight with Public Works Department. Um, the striping of Main Street, which has been delayed a couple of times, has now been rescheduled to Thursday at nine P M. Um, with a company that we think will be able to show up this, Thursday at nine P M.
That's good.
Yeah, stay tuned. Uh, we will move, are there any other questions for the Public Works Department? Uh, thank you, Councilmember Pecoraro, for those kind words. I think you look spectacular. And that was entirely staff-driven. Um, so, appreciate you noticing and, and alerting everyone to that. There are no questions for the Public Works Department. We will move on to the Recreation Department. Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. Short report this evening. Uh, summer has officially come to an end. We had a workday at the pool on Saturday and powered down the pool pumps, so. Only a matter of time. The days are getting shorter and Fall Fest will be here in just a couple of weeks. So, um, we officially put the pool to bed and, um, I just want to take a moment to, uh, thank our Technology Department. We also then, on Sunday, we held a training for our fitness center staff. And, um, that required use of the computers in the training room of Basement of Forty-five. And Mr. Moore was instrumental in assisting me, um, pulling that together and making sure that it was suc- it was a successful day, uh, for all staff that were involved. So, that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
That's a good example of how all the departments work so closely together. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. All right, we will move on to the Housing Department.
Nothing. I have nothing new to report, but I do want to take this opportunity, thank the council, and congratulate you, Ms. Pauls, on four years. Seemed like it was only yesterday. But it's, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you and, uh, any more.
You're here. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the Housing Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Technology Department. Ms. Moore.
Yeah, congratulations, and I do not have a report unless you have any questions.
You see the theme we've got going on tonight? Hearing no questions for the Technology Department, we will move on to the Community Services Department. Ms. Brown.
Good evening, and I too would like to say congratulations.
Thank you.
And I have no more.
I don't imagine we're gonna get that same answer out of Minister.
We never hope.
We will move on to the Planning Department. Number one, Mr. Depot.
Congratulations to you. Congratulations for four years. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, September second meeting was canceled as there were no applications before the board. On September third, the Historic District Commission met to discuss its nation's two-fiftieth preparations. On September eighteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing on Wakefield Valley Development Plan Amendment D P twenty-four oh one, parcel W. The amendment proposes to add thirty-five new density rights to parcel W to construct thirty-five single-family detached dwelling units and dedicate parcel X to Carroll Lutheran Village for open space. That concludes my report.
That is the shortest report we've read this summer.
I know. Ms. Pauls? I can ask, Mr. Depot, so for, um, for Wakefield Valley, so the last couple of times that, that issue has come up. It's finally coming for the council. Is this gonna wind up in front of the council again too, or?
Yes, it is. So, it goes to Planning Commission for recommendation of the Mayor Common Council. So, ultimately, there will be a public hearing with the Mayor Common Council for final approval or approval with conditions or denial of the development plan.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Depot? All right, now we'll move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Pauls. Congratulations again on your report. I, I just finished one myself, so, pardon me, years are flying by, so. Um, no report tonight from the Finance Department.
Questions from Ms. Rogers?
I would just like to thank Mrs. Rogers for, um, always providing me with the MML treasurer reports when I need them, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hearing no other questions, we'll move on to the Police Department. We have with us today, of course, our major. Ms. Sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, good evening, Councilman Mayor. Uh, we have a short report. Um, this last week with the return of school, uh, W P D prioritized traffic and pedestrian, uh, pedestrian safety around schools, um, including St. John's during, specifically during the drop-off and afternoon pickup times. In addition, we had officers conducting foot patrols inside our public schools throughout the day, provide visibility, reassurance and support to students and that. Other than that, I'd like to introduce Captain Jones. I think, uh, his name's, I mentioned several times, but I wanted to give him an opportunity to introduce himself to the mayor and the council and everybody present.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and congratulations again. Uh, it, it's, it's an honor to be here. Uh, I spent twenty-six years in Fort Worth, Oregon. Uh, and, uh, being in Westminster, I was drawn to this community because I was, I grew up in a community very similar to Westminster in Northern California. And then, uh, my first years I spent as a probation officer working with youth in a community very similar as well to, uh, Carroll County and Westminster. And so, uh, after leaving a larger city and coming here, I can tell you that, uh, sometimes the bigger changes can, can happen in the smaller communities, especially with one that's as connected relationally as you all are. And it's really special. Um, when I was looking, uh, I looked actually at the city. I started looking at social media. I started reading the mayor's posts on social media. And I actually looked at all of your profiles to see how you all work together and how you work with the departments and public safety. And it was amazing.
Came here anyway.
And I did. And it's, I, it was, to me, it was like, I felt like I was being called here. And so, uh, something you'll know about me, I have a lot of energy and a lot of ideas, and I'll be very involved in a lot of things, including, uh, my off time. Uh, you'll see my, myself, my adult kids, my wife, uh, in events just to be a part of the community. So, that's, that's a little bit about me. You'll learn more as we get to know one another.
Goodness.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Pecoraro has a quick question for public safety. Sure. Um, Major, I'm sorry to blindside you with this. Okay. I was asked about this today and it's something I need to bring up. Uh, I get a lot of questions about the scooters that we see cruising around town. Sometimes they're on the highways, sometimes they're on city streets, sometimes they're on the sidewalks. Um, what's, what's the law say? What, what should people be doing? What's the right way for people to be using?
So, scooters need to follow the same laws as a bicycle. They could be on the streets, not on sidewalks. Um, we've done a couple initiatives downtown, passing out educational information. Uh, we've done a couple of enforcement efforts where, you know, we try to stop them and just educate them on the law and, uh, you know, provide them warnings and stuff like that. But they're supposed to just follow, excuse me, the rules of the road, just like a bicycle.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Follow up.
Ms. Gilbert?
This is nothing to do with scooters, but have we found an uptick in the, um, dirt bike dilemma that was going on and plaguing the city there for a little while? I personally have been hearing them around the King Park area quite a bit lately. Um, so I was wondering if that was a problem somewhere else.
We haven't seen it or been notified of it as a problem. Um, you know, I think over the summer, we had one or two incidents. Um, but no one has made us aware that they're still out there and we haven't seen them. So, we haven't seen an uptick to answer your question.
Okay, so, in other words, when I hear them.
Yeah, we're about to see an uptick.
Mr. President, we, we encourage people to call the non-emergency number when they hear.
Are there any other questions for Major Price?
Mr. President, back to the public safety department.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry. The, yeah, it's just, uh, there will be a public comment period at the end of the meeting, and if you speak that, you're, you'll be warned. Absolutely.
Mr. President, back to the public safety department now.
Thank you very much, appreciate it all. Okay, well, that's a, it's a great segue because that segues us to citizens' comments. You mustn't let my mind- So, I am aware our agenda is citizens' comments, during which we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues related to tonight's agenda or other city matters. For those not attending the public meeting, we welcome your comments via, um, comments@westminstermd.gov. All emailed comments will be shared with the mayor and council. Please include your address and phone number with your comments. Do not avoid comments from the president this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the mayor and council. Our role at this meeting is to listen to your comments and respond appropriately after consulting with staff and each other. If there is anyone here this evening that wishes to be heard, we state your name and your address for the record.
Man, Scott. One piece means thing.
Right there.
One D Swings Day, right there. Um, I witnessed a, with Daniel's student talking on the phone on a scooter that crashed into a curb, they had a car away now. Yeah, I just want to make you aware that, um, I guess it would be the same as car, you shouldn't be talking on the phone, and she was actually texting. The first thing she did, she ducked up, she was wearing glasses, she was there.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, that's totally, that's, you're, you're. Appreciate that. Anyone else who should be heard this evening? Okay. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is the lady, sir. My name is Tiffany Williams.
Tiffany Williams?
Yeah.
Do you mind scanning up this, because I have been hearing fucking ridiculous about this.
One seventy-four south portion. Westminster Mall. I'm here because I've been invited to sit in with us. I'm here with my neighbor, and we're dealing with a issue that has caused us a lot of trauma. We're trying to find out what is the procedures for quartering bad bugs, other people's property, that is more else, that are known to our property. It's caused us a fortune. We've been to several organizations. It's that the kind that I've sent weddings out. This is kind of a measure for me, because I don't want it to end up in my life anymore. As we have worked at the house, sadly. The cessation of rehab on the other way. So. We can do anything we can to secure our property. This has been an ongoing thing. I've been in that street for twenty years. Something has to be with that. We have to figure out a way for both of us to leave a point of this. The same with them driving home for me. Since I'm active for twenty years. I believe that I've just met, three years ago. Well, instead of moving. I had no choice but to stay there. My daughter had to be removed for the safety of her. And I thought the same. I don't know our situation that involves the way in some of this county. Which was the best sugar. This situation that we're living on this lot is pretty much gone to a quarter unhealthy situation. I can tell I called everybody, and now I'm here. I don't know what else to do. But I have a widow, but it's, but it's adult that goes to the art. Why would you go to this community? Where we live, that we just got our road stuff. People slam back the early, but that's a learning and blessing community. This situation is gonna, it's already ran away. We don't have our kids here at this least level school. I don't want to, because I, I'm not letting it go now. We have to take, stay on this quickly. We can't let this be another situation on T B that knew that, that in between, young people are aware of us. You know, they are. I'm not here to make any more of us, but I just can't, I can't take it anymore. Just can't, excuse me, to take my child and relocate. I can't. But the mental states for her might shake up. We have to address this. By addressing, because it's going to run away with our community. And it's going to go over to other places. It's a situation that you just don't handle. Like a mouse with a cat in. It costs a fortune. And I could, I, I'm not qualified to go in these organizations no more. Because I'm already a city. I'm trying to buy my home. I am. I thank you all the organization. And I'm thankful for Cal Cal. I just want us to get, I don't involve this. I don't want to spill out anymore. We have no son. I'm having to be separated from my daughter. That is hard for me. It's because we're too close to the hospital, so I bought it, I bought I worked here. That was very hard. The vaccination capital is so easy for me, but it's not for my family that I'm built here. They want it, they like it, I don't, I mean. We gotta do something.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We hear your frustration. As I said in the beginning, we won't make any comment or discuss this at this time, but we hear you loud and clear. Uh, we will get with staff, um, staff, do make sure we keep up with their contact information, please. Um, the other meeting, we sense that to, uh, Ms. Simhoss, that's great. Uh, but thank you for your comments, ma'am. And is there anyone else who has a question for this evening? Okay. Uh, that concludes our agenda at any meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday. I have no one here. Once again, somebody help me out with the twenty-second. Thank you very much.